Good evening. Welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, September 17th, and this is a regular meeting of Athens City Council, but we're going to begin our meeting with a committee as a whole with the Athens County Commissioners talking to us about a proposal for, well, US-50 corridor wastewater, that's what. This is actually an agenda item for the Planning and Development Committee, so I'm going to turn it over to Chair Lady Christine Fall to make introductions and get everything started.
Great. Thank you. Tonight, we have a presentation from the Athens County Commissioners on the US-50 Wastewater Facilities Project, which basically is sewer, sewage project that would tie into Athens, this Athens City Sewer Project Sewer Plant, which is why we're interacting. If it was just Athens County, it would be something different. So first order is to have the presentation of what your ideas are, and then I will open it up to questions and comments. This is the first communication that we've basically had with the council, so it will be one of, I would expect, several communications and discussions that we have about this project, because it is a major development and planning project for both the city of Athens and the county of Athens, so I think that it behooves us to explore all the issues and questions that we have about this project. So, Lenny and Larry?
Chris, let me introduce myself. Larry King, one of the Athens County Commissioners.
Side Lenny Eysen, one of my other Commissioners. Now, I'll introduce our consultant in just a minute. What can I like to make before? This, this project is something that's been talked about since the mid-'90s. On a much larger scale, it's similar to the downtown project that had been talked about for nearly two decades the same way. And the way that became a project that was completed, and I think made the downtown look much better, was the fact that there was a partnership between the city and the chamber. In this instance, this is a project that's been kicked around for nearly 20 years, and hopefully can be a joint partnership of the city and the county. So, I'd like to introduce Jennifer Summer, who is our consultant from HDR Engineering.
Thank you. All right. Hopefully y'all can hear me on this. All right, test, test. I'll tell you what, let's just maybe go without this. Let a pretty clean life, not used to being mic'd, so I apologize. Good evening. Good evening. I come to you this evening with the Athens County Commissioners. I've had the good fortune and privilege to work with my friends here in Athens County and with many of you at the city for a number of years, almost 20 to be exact. So, I'm so excited to be here this evening with you to share a bit of information about this possible opportunity for a partnership between the county and the city. We have a presentation that we're going to give jointly this evening, and a little bit of information, we'd like to make our way through it in a pretty good clip, so we have plenty of time left over for question. So, without further ado, I'll jump right in. As Chris mentioned, the US-50 Wastewater Facilities Project is the title of our presentation this evening, and really would like to draw your attention to the tagline at the bottom of the screen. We believe indeed that this is a regional partnership for the environmental and financial benefit of not only the citizens of this region, but the potential users of the project. We have a number of things we want to go through this evening for you. Obviously Larry's already made introductions. We're going to give a little bit of an overview of the project as it stands today, and some of the background for the project, what's brought it here, has a very storied history, and to make sure that everyone is aware of what the facts of the project involve. Talk a little about Commissioner Eysen's, going to talk a little bit about the proposed partnership between the city and the county. We also want to spend a little bit of time talking to you about the affordability, and that is so very, very critical to the project moving forward. Want to make sure everyone understands the thresholds that we're bringing into play here, and what involves just the general measure of affordability for the potential users on the project. Last but not least, talk about a draft project schedule. There's a reason why I put the word "draft" in front of that, so work in project, in dynamic process, moving and changing all the time, and so this, just as it is represented, it is a draft project schedule. And as I mentioned, then we'll take your questions. Okay. The project, as I mentioned, a very basic history. In the mid-1990s, I was working with the county Commissioners at that time. Athens, as you well know, has formed a countywide water and sewer district. This was done in the mid-1990s as a part of a separate sanitary sewer project the Commissioners undertook in the village of Boctol. As luck would have it, then the EPA, our friends with EPA, some folks have been very actively interested in this corridor, said, "Aha, now we have someone to send letters to." And they sent the Commissioners a letter and said that they were well aware, had received complaints about some issues out in the corridor, and they referenced six subdivisions in the corridor on US-50 between the city of Athens and the village of Albany, that they had done investigations in at least several of them, and had some concern for the environmental findings. And this, again, was back in the mid-1990s, 1995, 1996. In 1997, the Commissioners said, "All right, this is a situation that is, concerns us. We want to respond to the concern of the EPA and their investigation. We need to respond." And they undertook a feasibility study. I was the primary author of that study two firms ago, and I've worked with them since. In 1997, the project itself had its first review from a technical perspective. We got to understand what infrastructure may be needed to address the environmental situation, and then beyond that, what costs the project would represent. When I get back to that here in a minute. Quite some time passed, a whole lot of reasons the project did not move forward, some of which we'll talk about today. In present day, or nearly, 2010, the county decided that, wow, it's been a long time since we talked about this project. There had been some renewed interest about that time, and the county, again, we got together and said, "All right, let's update those numbers." It's been a really long time, a lot had happened in a elapsed time period, and we said, "All right, let's, let's breathe some life into it and see what it would take today to do that project." I'm going to get into those numbers here in a minute as well. For the past two years, in addition to working here collaboratively with your staff, we have worked with various funding agencies and put out a preliminary concept for the project to see, as the Commissioners are critically concerned about its affordability, and you'll see why here in a minute, we wanted to approach funding agencies and see how viable the project was in their eyes. Did it serve enough users? Did it address sufficiently the environmental concern for the area? And would it be worthy of funding from a number of different agencies? We did receive some very positive feedback, received some negative feedback from other agencies as well, and so we feel armed, I know the Commissioners feel armed with that information, it's something that they are so very concerned about. We want to present some of that to you today. So, talk a little bit about the history. I think the context of the numbers game is very, very important today. In 1997, when the project was first given life, what was going on? Well, Bill Clinton was president, that was a while ago. The stock market closed, a little levity, so, for maybe, stock market closed above 7,000, gas was a buck 32 a gallon, that was an awful long time ago, right? I think I paid $3.99 last week. Lenny Eysen, I think, that year might have turned 25, and he told me there was a typo, I must have meant 21. Then, and when the study was done for the project, the US-50 Wastewater Collection System Project was estimated about $6 million, and I had a little asterisk beside that, because again, that was a very, very long time ago. The project looked a lot different, I'm going to get into the detail here in a minute. So now, 15 whole years later, what's going on? Well, a lot of things. And I did an up-down or unchanged, basically environmental conditions in the corridor, no surprise without a collection system, those environmental conditions have not gotten worse. The pollution that was out there and evident to the EPA back in the mid-1990s has not magically gone away. It still exists and is not better for having no collection system. Certainly, I think the staff here at the city and the staff at the county would agree. As a side note, economic development potential, I know that as a city, you seek in some measure, commensurate with your comprehensive plan, economic development. The potential in the US-50 corridor has not risen without central sanitary sewers, so that is certainly something to note. Beyond that, on the, on the up but downside, the project costs have most certainly risen. Also, on the upside, the number of potential customers in the corridor has risen as well. And then, a very positive note, I think, this is just Jennifer's observation, I believe that the interest between the city and the county of exploring a cooperative partnership, and again, Lenny's going to talk about that a little more in a minute, but I believe the interest, just from what I've observed, has improved over time, particularly in the last 15 years. I'm going to lend a little bit of information to you now about the facilities plan itself. Some of you have seen me talk about this. Basically, in a nutshell, and I do mean nutshell, maybe five minutes or so, I'm going to give you the background of what the '97 and the 2010 facilities plan brought forward. We're going to draw a picture, basically, of the project, and I have some pictures. As a part of that facilities plan, we provided the Commissioners initially in '97, and then again in 2010, technical information about a planning area, and you're going to see a picture of it in a minute. The folks who are interested in this project, certainly at the county commission, but other stakeholders, got together, again, most recently is 2010, drew a box, and it's not really a very uniform box, but a very interesting looking shape, around an area that they were interested in exploring, information about sewer infrastructure within, we call that the planning area. In that planning area, we developed user counts, both on opening day, if you're a traffic transportation person, on initial connection for your wastewater and water folks, but we gave the Commissioners the information of how many users would be potentially there the very first day and available to hook up to the sewer if the project moved forward. That's a user count. We also took that information in conjunction with guidelines were provided by the EPA, and give information that regarded sewage flows, how much wastewater would be collected in this infrastructure, and what the loading of that is, essentially, how strong is the waste. And then projected that out, not only 2010, but in five-year increments, all the way out to a 20-year planning period, which is pretty common, out to the year 2030. Beyond that, we talked through, and presented viable treatment options and collection system alignments, for, again, just exactly what this infrastructure would involve. We did go through and present an analysis of affordability, based on the number of users and the potential cost for the project, what would that look like on a per-user basis for an average bill per month? And there are a lot of definitions of that, we'll get into that in a minute. We sought stakeholder input, we involved not only folks here at your staff at the city, also the county, the county health department, we engaged them, certainly spoke to our friends at the EPA and Logan at the southeast district office, and generally brought to bear the information in a package. Quick notes about how we went from the $6 million number to the $20 million number. 15 years is a really good explanation for that, but other notes, ways that the initial planning document differed from today's planning document. One of the key decisions that the stakeholder group brought to bear was that, wow, we were dealing with an awfully, awfully large area. In 1997, the planning area went all the way from Athens to Albany. And as Larry knows, as former mayor of Albany, Albany was doing its own thing in the mid-1990s and has a system to speak for itself today, but when the study was revisited this most recent time, two years ago, that planning area was cut in half. The Commissioners felt, and I think all the stakeholders felt, that there was a much more dense area that could be affordable, a little more than reaching all the way to the village of Albany. And so you'll see in a minute, that planning area does indeed stop at Radford Road on US-50, so, from city of Athens out to Radford Road, and then back up to the city of Athens. I'll show you that in a minute. An environmental review was added. Back in the 1990s, the likelihood that the project would move forward was pretty remote, had a lot of things stacked against it, not the least of which was cost, and so getting down really into the nitty-gritty and deciding, were there major environmental factors that would also add cost, that was disclaimed and set out there on the side. In 2010, we brought that back into the mix and said, "Maybe, probably ought to quantify those things, that's part of affordability as well." That's included in the report. Beyond that, the differences, again, in, from '97 to 2010, land requirements were added. We did make reference, and I don't want to overplay this too strongly, generally speaking, affordable infrastructure is one where there's a nice balance between purchased, acquired land and rights-of-way, and that's not a surprise to you, you've done infrastructure projects before, but we basically passed judgment on the fact that most of the infrastructure, again, with ODOT and Federal Highway Commission's consent, we could see an alignment within the public rights-of-way, with the exception of pump stations. I'm going to get back to that in a minute as well. But the land requirements were analyzed, costs were included for that as well. Collection system technologies were added. Our friends at the USDA require if we ever decide that the project will need that funding, if the Commissioners decide to avail themselves of that funding, we needed to do a review of various collection system technologies, not just decide right from Jump Street, gravity sewer collection, or gravity force main was the way to go. So, we did present an analysis of that as well. Comments on constructability and environmental impact, we tried to wrap up those things that, again, in the fringe, might add cost, or things that we could rule out as adding cost. Collection system alignments were also, as I mentioned, we went through, reviewed the technologies, decided where we could put this infrastructure. We actually went one step further, Commissioners were the ones that suggested it, and it was a great suggestion. We engaged the folks at ODOT District 10 Office in Marietta, and they actually engaged, on the county's behalf, the folks at Federal Highway. One of the major obstacles to putting a sewer in this corridor over time has definitely been ODOT's propensity and Federal Highway's propensity to hang on to their right-of-way and say, "You can't put infrastructure in limited access right-of-way." And so, we did engage them and said, "But really, you ought to take a look at this. You ought to look at this, and we're not asking for much, we're not asking for carte blanche in the right-of-way," and I'll show you the drawing that they have since given a tacit approval to. Capacity fees and our treatment facility costs were itemized and included as well. Okay. Here's the facilities plan drawing I referenced earlier, the light blue line, let's see if I can travel with this thing and not get in my own way. This light blue line around the periphery represents the project planning area up there. Highway, here is US-50, and then Radford Road up on into the back part of Athens. This area is the Elliottsville area, and over here, the beginning of these six subdivisions. So, generally, that's an orientation for the project planning area as it was conceived by the stakeholder group in 2010. Something else of note, I mentioned that we had worked collaboratively with your staff. I can't say enough about them, you have a great group of people on staff. Your city engineer, your service safety director, your planning director, they've all been very, very helpful to the Commissioners in this effort. The shaded areas that you see here on this drawing represent areas that your planning department speculated, and this came straight from your planning department, speculated in 2010, where you had either pending development or conceived development, something that a developer had brought to you and said, "Hey, I might want to plan for this in the future." Lot of detail, really tiny print in the lower right, this is an exhibit copied from the report, we certainly can get you a copy of that if you don't have it. But I put this up here to represent that, yes, we did indeed stretch our legs with your planning department in where growth might occur. Certainly, you don't want to pass judgment on affordability beyond what can be afforded present day, but it's foolish, certainly, in infrastructure planning, not to plan for what may become in the future within that 20-year planning period that can be at least reasonably speculated on it. So, we engaged your staff, and they were very, very helpful. Beyond that, here's the rub. Initial customer base, 1,345 current user accounts can be estimated in this three-and-a-half-mile corridor between the city of Athens and the village of Albany today. User accounts can be residential accounts, they can be residential equivalencies, so a commercial business or an industry, all of those were certainly factored in and taken into account, but on the basis, initially, from 911 counts, your EMA department provided us all of the account numbers, I don't mean personal information, I mean basically a count of people in the corridor. We received that from them, and then went and thoroughly checked through and compared to census, and came up with a number of 1,345 user accounts. Beyond that, what does that mean? So, startup flows for 1,345 user accounts amounts to about, about a half a million gallons a day of waste, and that's average daily flow. During peak flow, certainly that can jump up, you know you have, your treatment plant is designed for average and peak daily flow, or peak flow period, that peak flow could certainly jump up to about three times as much as average daily flow. Interestingly, in the year 2030, a projected rise in user accounts, 1,734, and then what that does, the average daily flow certainly creeps it up closer to a million gallons a day at 700,000, peaks of well over that and approaching 2 million gallons a day of normal domestic waste. Okay. Talk very briefly about, now that we had the counts and we knew how much waste flow would be coming, what kind of infrastructure? And I'm going to talk very briefly, because Commissioners are going to take it over in a second. Infrastructure alternatives, several of them on a collection system basis were identified. Waste treatment, we did analyze three different potentials for waste treatment, a new treatment plant, one at the Plains, and yours as well. The infrastructure alternative for the sewer piping is presented here. Essentially, the magenta color is the, meant to represent the sewer lines. Stars on the alignment are meant to represent crossings of US-50 right-of-way, that was very meaningful to the Federal Highway folks, and then the black and yellow shaded areas were areas we felt it would be necessary to occupy US-50 right-of-way, and that was presented to them as well. At present, the analysis had come back, at the end of the 2010 planning area, that there would likely be a recommendation to connect to the city of Athens treatment plant, that was the most affordable. At three different connection points, a north system interconnect, an Elliottsville or potentially further east connection point, and then a south system interconnect, just based on where the topography would have us connecting to your system following the lay as planned. Pros and cons, there are several, just note the ones regarding your system. At the time we presented, collection system, your collection system does indeed have some INI, some flow bottlenecks, that was something we were mindful of at the time, and still you have a lack of capacity at your connection points, there's a lot of things going on, but very few people plan for lots of extra capacity outside of their system, you are that true to that paradigm. You have an ongoing construction project, design and construction project at your treatment plant, rate legislation in place, you are close to the city, or to the planning area, did have at the time, and will plan for unused capacity, so that was a plus. The cost was a plus for the project as well, connecting to you was a little less expensive than new construction, and then last but not least, we felt that the reference in your city comprehensive plan to supporting growth and development in the southeast section of the city was definitely a plus for the project too. I'm going to hit this very quickly and turn it over to the Commissioners. Here's, here's the drumroll. The collection options coming in at about $20 million, $20 million, $63,000 to be exact, projecting an average user rate at between $45 and $55 a month. And I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Eysen now. I, hopefully, have not eaten up all of his time, talking about intergovernmental partnerships. Yes, I will.
Thank you, Jennifer. One of the things to talk about tonight that we wanted to bring up to the city is looking at an intergovernmental partnership. When we look at the different agencies we have to deal with, the city, the county, the state, the feds, it's important that we get together and collaborate. One of the things that we took about earlier and on this slide, why do this, is actually for the mutual environmental and financial benefit of the citizens and the users of the system, but there are additional benefits that we want to talk about. One is the general health and welfare and beauty of the entrance to the city along Route 50. You don't want to have an area that's rundown, have problems with it, as you look through having waste treatment difficulties, so that's one of the things that's a benefit to the city. The other is a large customer, instead of having 1,345 individual customers, you'll have the county as your customer, so you've got one large customer you're dealing with as opposed to a number of individuals. The third benefit to coming to the city is the capacity fee, that you have your published capacity fee that will be paying you. That will allow you to treat some of your issues you have with Southside Collection and give you money to leverage to get other monies, to take care of those problems that you have existing that you need to treat. Without doing that in one large lump sum, you're going to lose that benefit. The next thing is an elimination of a roadblock to potential annexation in that area. When you look at the future, if the city decides it's going to expand that way and annex that way, if you have a separate operating water and sewer system, it's going to be much more difficult for you to annex that area, if you're already having a cooperative agreement in place that roadblocks eliminated. For us, the big benefit is reduce our cost. We can build our own system for $24 million to our own treatment. We can go through and take our treatment system and run it back to our existing Plains Water and Sewer Treatment System, but each of those are more expensive, so it's a huge benefit for us and saves our potential customers a number of dollars and gives you some dollars to work with to solve some of your own problems. We have a number of existing templates in place. We've already negotiated a city-county model with Nelsonville as far as sewage treatment and collection goes. We have an existing model with other water providers for bearing collections. Those are places to use as a starting point to look forward to working on this project. When you look at intergovernmental agreements that are required by the funding agencies, and this is a win-win for the city and the county, it's a chance to put stakeholder groups together, have regular meetings, to negotiate a memorandum of understanding so we can know what to expect in the future. One of the important things about outlining a memorandum of understanding is the fact that you can chart your course, you won't have unexpected developments taking place because you've already outlined those in your agreement. You don't have to worry about potential hazardous materials coming into the system, because you can outline those in your memorandum of understanding. You can take care of all these potential roadblocks and hurdles upfront through negotiation and a process for agreement coming to each other and getting this worked out before we move forward. Some of the things that we want to talk about primarily when we go through the intergovernmental agreement, obviously our bearing methodology, rates for treatment and future escalation of costs. We don't want to sign a blanket agreement that has no caps in it, so we want to have a firm understanding of what our costs are. We can project out what our costs would be if we operated our own treatment plant. If we go into an intergovernmental agreement with the city, we're going to lose that option, so we want to make sure we have, take care of ourselves and making sure we have an agreement that's fair for both sides. Clearly, obviously, the capacity fee, which is an important carrot for the city to get large amounts of money at once. The city of Nelsonville used our capacity fee to help with their problems in Nelsonville when we first made the treatment system with Boctol. There, the models of bill that will be used, clearly, we can outline fees, payment schedules, any future planning, other roadblocks to discover and deal with, obviously, existing customer basis. You have some existing customers outside the city already, what's going to happen when we go in and have this treatment model in place, but it works under governmental agreements. So, there's all things to outline and deal with, and make sure that we get ironed out in advance. We talked about keys to affordability, this is really the key to this whole project. One of the things we looked at, and is important for us to realize, is what goes into those keys to affordability. Clearly, the capital costs to build the project, the debt terms and debt reserve, our future maintenance costs, our treatment costs, our funding sources and terms, and of course, the project scheduling and timing. This project has been talked about for a long time, the scheduling's been pushed back and forth for a long time. The EPA had written findings and orders for this project, which left us no options years ago, but we were in the process of building the Boctol system at the time, the Commissioners were able to negotiate with the EPA not to issue those findings and orders. Those findings and orders are sitting on an EPA desk waiting to be issued. It's our hope that they don't issue them anytime soon, that we can go forward with this project and get this project built. It all comes down to affordability. The Commissioners have looked at a number of projects over the years in various parts of the county, and those projects have not gone forward. We've invested money in planning, invested money in the process of getting public aware and making sure that they get what they want in their projects and that they can afford their projects. So, when you look at the number that Jennifer talked about, it fits well within our affordability scales, so when you look at the next project guideline, median household income in the county is $31,559. So, funding agencies, especially when you look at the federal government, the amount of money from the federal government that are involved in this project, look at 3% of median household income as the top end of affordability. That means $78.90 a month for both water and sewer as the base bill. This project, if you look at, it's commonly split 40/60, with sewer being the most expensive side. If you're looking at our numbers, between 44, 45 and $55, we're right at the top limit. So, we have to be very careful as you go through the process of looking at affordability and making sure we have a project that's affordable to move forward and will get funded by the appropriate agencies when the time comes. With that, I'm going to kick it back to Jennifer for a quick draft schedule so we can get the questions.
Yes, thank you. Draft project schedule, just suffice it to say this, we've outlined a three-phase planning approach for the project. Planning on the project would likely take, as it's projected right now, between 18 and 24 months, with at least 24 months also needed for construction. So, were the project ready to begin planning and design today? It would be a solid four years, if not longer, by the time funding would be secured and move the project forward. Intergovernmental agreement negotiations are estimated, and this is strictly an estimate, y'all can, can talk together as long as you'd like, we expect that, however, the bones of an agreement, a basic agreement, could be achieved in roughly four months.
in roughly four months. Beyond that bidding and construction timeframe I mentioned, user connections would likely at the end of the project take an additional three to four months to achieve. So the very last thing, ask, proposed action. The commissioners certainly would request that the city authorize its service safety director and the city engineer to begin dialogue with the county commissioners and negotiations on an intergovernmental agreement with Athens County. With that, we'll take your questions.
Thank you. I think tonight because of our continuing meeting, thank you, we need to not open it up for the vast amount of questions that I'm sure everybody has because I have, you know, a whole page of concerns and questions about this project. And this is the opening of negotiations and the sunlight that all these projects need to go under. And as city council, we have certain priorities to look after, you know, our sewer capacity, the build-out of the area that we're talking about. You haven't, the presentation hasn't even like covered most of my questions. So we need to open this up. I would suggest that everybody on council think about this. We only got the plan this afternoon, the report. I haven't had a chance to go over it with fine tooth comb. So we need to go over and have another discussion at a longer meeting because this really does have a lot to do with the development, what our region looks like in the future because it's not just looking at an environmental problem, but also the planning, the development of the whole area. So I think that we need to look at it and do a longer term. So whether we want to have a special timetable or a special meeting, one of these Mondays, I mean, we're not at the next Monday, but I don't know how the administration wants to do it.
I was, did have the planner check today, and under our subdivision definitions, it does state that any improvement or easements for the extension and maintenance of public sewer, water, et cetera. So perhaps, I mean, would you accept some sort of movement going forward that they come to the planning commission?
Yes, I think that's, yes.
And we ultimately make that recommendation?
Yes. I think that it would make a lot of sense because this has a huge, and you discussed about how it coincides or not coincides with the planning, our comprehensive plan. And so we need to have a more in-depth investigation of this plan. And I think the planning commission would make sense in seeing how it is, falls under the subdivision code.
And I do, you talked about capacity and possible issues and impacts, but our wastewater treatment plant upgrade was taken into, you know, a more general, broader, to allow for that growth.
Right. But I think that there's a lot more planning issues that can be brought up here. Build-out scenarios, I know that there are some, but what it looks like, what sort of characteristics the users are that they have done for their build-out, you know, there's a lot of issues that I'm not comfortable with right at this point. So we need to have much more public discussion about this.
And the planning commission is public.
Yes, so.
Mayor? Would you want to schedule, this is one of the subjects we're going to explain in the development committee?
Yeah.
You may as well take it in bite-sized pieces as well.
Yes, so.
I know as a planning commission, we'd be looking at some aspects of it, but this is.
We have a meeting next week, so we could have.
Maybe you want to start.
Are we going to be on campus? We're going to be on campus.
We're going to be here.
Oh, we're going to be here, okay. So, yes.
Oh, we need, oh.
Open it up to a discussion for the next planning and development committee and invite who you want to come to answer questions and concerns and discuss.
Might I suggest you send your questions to us so we have a chance to look up the information ahead of time rather than try and answer on the spot?
Yes.
So if you have questions that are already existing, we can at least hear them and try to get the answers for you.
Yes.
Fair enough.
So, but I think that it's going to be a general discussion also, so.
I believe that's what we want to, we want to have dialogue.
I know council members have a lot of questions. We had several community residents who wanted to talk also, but time has gotten away from us and we do have other commitments for this evening also.
Yes.
So let's.
I would say, yes, this is not the end of the discussion, but the beginning of the discussion about this.
So we have a.
Thank you.
A committee night next Monday, which we have discussed possibly was going to be a joint meeting with a high university student senate at Walter Hall. That has, those plans have not come together, so we're going to be meeting in this room a regular council committee night. So one of those committees will be planning and development.
Yes, thank you.
So we will probably open the discussion. I doubt that we'll answer all of the questions or even get all the questions out yet, so.
I want to say thank you for coming in and starting this.
Thank you for having us. If you want questions, do we send it to you, Lenny, or?
That's fine. I'll circulate it and make sure they're going to answer.
Okay.
Council members or community members, if you have questions, can you get them to our clerk, Debbie Walker, by tomorrow? Rough questions, list of questions, and she'll forward them to the commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Can you give us three minutes?
Get a nice shot in.
Kind of change. Good evening again. This is Athens City Council, our regular scheduled night for council business. It's about 7:38, it looks like. We had a long committee of the whole, which was really a planning and development discussion about some countywide sewer collection discussion, and we will continue that with questions next Monday at another planning and development committee meeting. Right now, we're going to move ahead. We do have a quorum present with all members present. We have one set of minutes that we'd like to accept. We'd like to dispose of the minutes from the regular session held September 4th, 2012. Do we have a motion to accept those minutes?
I motion that we accept the minutes. Second.
All those in favor of accepting those minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have accepted those. Again, I have no communications of my own. However, we will ask other officials. Mayor Wyler?
I'll pass.
Auditor Hecht?
No communication.
Later on.
No report.
In the agenda, we have approval.
My minutes, my financial reports, yes.
Lord Director Lang?
Mr. President, I would just take a brief moment to welcome. I see we have several Boy Scouts with us here at the meeting tonight, and I wanted to make special note of that just because the first time that I ever came to a meeting like this was a very similar thing. As a member of Troop 50, Albany, Ohio, being brought into a meeting like this, and obviously I was so overjoyed by all the exciting things that go on here that I decided to come to these sorts of meetings for a living, so who knows? One of you could be the next Kent Butler someday, but welcome. Thank you.
That's the same call.
Thank you.
Can I make an announcement?
Please do.
I just want to remind people that I'm taking letters of interest for the Sustainability, Environmental and Sustainability Commission. So if you can send them to the clerk, Debbie Walker, just a letter saying that you're interested in some brief experience or ideas. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, we've had all our communications. Now we're going to move on to the member Gosne show. These are ordinances for third reading, ordinance 8412, an ordinance banning parking and closing that portion of Court Street from Mulberry to Carpenter on October 27th and 28th, 2012 in anticipation of a large number of people converging on downtown Athens Halloween weekend.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move adoption of ordinance 8412.
Second.
So this ordinance obviously is for our annual Halloween block party. This, as well as the following three ordinances, will all be dealing with setting up the city for this event to make sure that we have a safe and fun time for all.
Okay, ordinance 8412, we have a second, I believe?
Yes.
All those in favor of accepting ordinance 8412 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is accepted. Ordinance 8512, an ordinance establishing a glass-free drinking container zone on Court Street and adjoining sidewalks between Union and State on October 27th and 28th, 2012 Halloween weekend. Member Gosne.
I would like to move adoption of ordinance 8512.
Second.
And this ordinance simply sets up Court Street for a glass-free zone in the interest of public safety during this Halloween weekend.
We've done this for several years. We didn't always do this for Halloween, but it has proved to be a great improvement in safety up there. Okay, all those in favor of ordinance 8512 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This is accepted also. Ordinance 8612, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling and soliciting to allow vending in a designated area on October 27th and 28th, 2012 Halloween weekend.
Thank you. I move adoption of ordinance 8612.
Second.
Similar to the other ordinances, this will help make the Halloween event go swiftly, and this is to allow the city to regularly vending in a certain designated area during the festivities.
All those in favor of ordinance 8612 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
8612.
Ordinance 8612 is accepted. Ordinance 8712, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Section 13.04.10, unnecessary noise in the downtown area on October 27th and 28th, 2012 Halloween weekend. Member Gosne.
Thank you. I move adoption of ordinance 8712.
Second.
And this ordinance is to make sure that we're paying attention to our own noise laws because we're scheduling public music for this event as we do every year to make sure that that's within our legal guidelines.
Mayor, do you know offhand, like, when the music stops?
When the music stops?
One and 1:30.
I'm sorry?
One and 1:30.
One and 1:30.
Mm-hmm. Two different stages, as usual.
All those in favor of ordinance 8712 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Ordinance is accepted. Here we have ordinances for second reading. Usually, ordinances for second reading, that's exactly what happens. They're read and no action is taken. However, if the introducing council member wishes action, then.
There you go.
Is that also. Ordinance 9312, an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street on Wednesday, October 31st, 2012, from 5:30 PM to 7:00 PM for trick-or-treat hosted by the Athens Uptown Business Association. Member Gosne, introduce.
Do we need to suspend on this? I think we do. I would like to move that we consider ordinance 9312 under suspension.
Second.
And the reason for the suspension is this event is coming up October 31st, and we want to make sure that the city is able to set this up.
We have a second for suspension of the rules only. All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 9312 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, the regular rules are suspended.
Thank you. I would like to move adoption of ordinance 9312.
Second.
This ordinance is to allow Uptown Trick-or-Treat on October 31st, sponsored by the Athens Uptown Business Association. So this closes the entire, pretty much the entire length of Court Street. And the time, if anyone's paying attention or has their costume ready for it, the time will be from 5:30 PM to 7:00 PM. And many of the businesses in Uptown Athens participate in this, and a huge number of local families come to attend this event.
Member Butler?
Thank you. My understanding is that this is a new change this year in closing all of Court Street for, or this section of Court Street to make it safer. Is that correct?
No, we actually, it's due that in the last few years, we always offer the free parking at the parking garage.
Okay.
It's probably, everybody's getting a little off track because of that North Court project.
Okay. Thank you for the reminder.
Okay, all those in favor of adoption of ordinance 9312 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Ordinance 9312 is accepted. Ordinance 9412, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and execute an agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission for a Clean Ohio Conservation Grant. Again, Member Gosne, can you say about that? Ordinance 9512, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application to participate in the 2013 state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs for issue one funds to execute contracts as required and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Gosne.
I would like to move that we consider this ordinance under suspension of council rules.
Second.
And the reason for the suspension is to meet, to meet application deadlines for this grant opportunity for the city.
Mayor, you had your hand up just.
Yes, we need to suspend the rules for this.
Okay, again, we're going to, we're asking to suspend the rules on ordinance 9512. All those members in favor of suspension of the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The rules have been suspended.
Thank you. I would like to move adoption of ordinance 9512.
Second.
And this ordinance is to allow the city to apply for state funds in order to improve our Columbus Road corridor, stretching the entire length of Columbus Road, I believe, up to Mound Street. And this is, we're using several different fund sources for this. This would be a big chunk of it if we were successful in receiving these funds. And this project, just to remind people, will include repaving, restriping of the street, water, stormwater, I believe, will be part of this, as well as some sidewalk repairs. And is there anything else that I'm leaving out of this list? I think that's pretty much all of it.
We'll find more, I'm sure.
A big project, needless to say.
Can you, did I hear comments down here?
I would just say major improvement to an entrance to the city.
Yeah.
Absolutely. All those in favor of passing ordinance, of accepting ordinance 9512 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Ordinance is accepted. Here we are for ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 9612, an ordinance authorizing the adoption of a three-year agreement with the American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees, Local 2403, and Ohio Council 8, AFL-CIO, concerning wages and working conditions and declaring an emergency. Member Nisley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we consider this ordinance under suspension.
Second.
And the reason being that the contract dates back to August 26th of this past year, and so we need to have it passed so it can become effective.
Okay, so we're asking for suspension of the rules here. All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 9612 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move for adoption of ordinance 9612.
Second.
And as explained in the title of it, this is for our, what's known as the AFSMI workers who work for the city, approximately 54 of our 171 full-time workers. Covers maintenance specialists, custodians, parking enforcement officers, laborers, our licensed water treatment operators, so many of the essential positions in our city here. And it covers wages and wage increases over. And it covers wages and wage increases over the next three years. They will receive a two-and-a-half percent increase in year one, two percent in year two, two percent in year three. And then other conditions are stipulated in the contract, which council members have reviewed.
And we discussed that last week pretty extensively, and then we talked, too, about the negotiations and the administration that negotiated with that, so it was a pretty comprehensive discussion.
Yes. And once again, thanks to the people who were taking part in the negotiations, Service Director Haran Mosley and our Council President Jim Sands, and our Human Resources Director Claudia Reagan, among others.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance 9612. All those in favor of accepting 9612 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Ordinance 9612 is adopted. Ordinance 9712. An ordinance declaring a real and present emergency, thus obviating the formal bidding procedure for emergency structural improvements to the city building cupola. Introduced by Councilmember Nysley.
Mr. President, I request that we, I move that we consider this under suspension of the rules.
Seconds.
And the reason, the reason for this being is that we do have some very definite structural problems with water leaking in on the cupola on the top of the city building, and very definitely, as our clerk of council knows, right into the ceiling of the windows and the light fixtures. So it is a situation that needs to be taken care of immediately.
We are asking to suspend the rules on ordinance 9712. All those in favor of suspension of the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The rules have been suspended. Member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of 9712.
Second.
And this particular ordinance, as explained, will help us pay for the repairs. There will be a bell tower window replacement, stair and railing reinforcement, painting of the bell tower exterior, and a small amount of contingency fees built in, and that cost is at $51,000. So it may seem like a lot, but over the years, Clerk of Council Walker traced for us the repairs that have gone in, and we have consistently worked at keeping that, the cupola, in good repair. But it just, it takes money, so we've been working at it.
This is a historic building, and the cupola is a major part of it.
It is.
In fact, there are lights in the cupola. When you leave here and you look back at the building, you can see that it is lighter. It'll look a lot better once we do it this way. Were there, I saw the service safety director's hand up?
No, just that it needs to be done. It's making into your office.
We have suspended the rules, and now we're going to accept or not ordinance 9712. All those in favor of ordinance 9712 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 9812. An ordinance amending the 2012 appropriation ordinance. Introduced by Councilmember Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we consider this ordinance under the suspension of the rules.
Second.
And the reason for this being is that, once again, this money will be appropriating some for repairs that need to be made to some of the other buildings in the city, and so we have an immediate need for the repairs to be performed.
We are asking for suspension of the rules on ordinance 9812. All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. No? The rules have been suspended. Councilmember Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt ordinance 9812.
Second.
And this particular ordinance, in addition to providing for repairs, $10,000 for Arts West, then some painting that needs to be done to the parking garage elevators and hallways, and then we have approximately $3,800 that will be used for exterior painting of the Mansfield House. That's our Visitor and Convention Bureau spot location on East State Street next to our community center. And then the other thing is that we do have additional monies that need to be appropriated to pay for our streetlights between now and the end of the year, and additional $23,000 for that that needs to be appropriated.
Any other comments? All those in favor of accepting ordinance 9812 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. This ordinance is also accepted. Ordinance 9912. An ordinance approving the report of the Assessment Equalization Board with respect to objections concerning the estimated assessments for sidewalk improvements associated with the North Court Street area, infrastructure improvements, infrastructure improvements project, and the Grosvenor Slip project. Member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. We discussed this in committee meeting last week, some of the details of this, and assessment in the sidewalk sites, and also then meeting with the service safety director and our public works director to review these requests. And they, these particular citizens had objections to some of the fees that were going to be assessed for the sidewalk. It is their responsibility, citizens' responsibility, to pay for these, and became time to improve these particular sidewalks because we were also working on our Grosvenor Street Slip. That's a ten-year, at least, slip that's been finally repaired. And then also, we're able to do some improvements on the sidewalks on Morris Avenue, and then, I believe, a brief portion on East State Street. So we've got the board's report, and that was forwarded to all council members and discussed last week, so now we're moving forward with the approving the report.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and enter into a business tax abatement agreement with CGI Group, Inc., and declaring an emergency. Introduced by Councilmember Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we consider this ordinance under suspension.
Second.
And the reason being that the CGI Group is in discussions with the city and the state of Ohio about possibly locating here in Athens. It would be a new facility, and so timely discussions are very important. So we'd like to move forward with authorizing the mayor to be able to enter and negotiate and enter into an agreement with them.
We're looking for suspension on ordinance 112. All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The rules have been suspended. Member Nysley.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 112.
Second.
And as described, this is for the CGI Group, and it's a business technology facility. And they would potentially, over a number of years, be bringing 150 job positions to Athens County area. So it's very important for economic development. They'd be looking to locate a facility on East State Street, so there would be some improvements to that, to the building. So we're hopeful that those negotiations move forward in a positive way. Councilmember Fall?
I'd like to say, part of this agreement, the city has little, they have few tools in order to get employers to come into the city besides having good infrastructure, good recreation, and a nice, lively place to live with arts and things that we talked about last week. A income tax agreement that we have such as this is one of those tools. But I'd like to say that it's not a complete giveaway, that it also has a clawback. So if CGI does not match our expectations and the requirements that we have in this agreement, then the amounts of money that goes to them will be clawed back, meaning that they will require to pay the city back. So it's kind of a win-win situation for the city so that we can get some high-paying jobs, and they are high-tech, high-paying jobs. And so it's using also an area of the city that we would like to, you know, encourage development and such, so.
Mayor, did you want to add to that?
I'd like to point out that this contract's still in negotiation. I need just the authorization to enter into that contract, so the actual details. You'll have to excuse me, I'm battling a cold here, so I'm not firing on all cylinders. But again, this is actually activity between the university, the Economic Development Council. If you have any questions, Sarah Mars over here, raise your hand so they know who you are. She's the director of the Economic Development Council. She's the point person of this. We have Hocking College included in the mix, tri-county training, vocational training. The last conversation I had, I think, was at the Chamber, or the Inc. wasn't, had been signed on the contract, so that's, that was last week. So, and I see in the paper, they actually have a website where they ask for job interviews in the Athens News today. So obviously, it's moving forward, but all the pieces aren't all together yet, and that's really what I'm asking authority on.
I was just going to make that same point, that there were one of many other moving parts in this agreement, and I'm working on an initial draft, which I should have completed in the next day or two for the administration's review. We're still working out a few of the kinks.
Yes. It's a very elaborate effort at this point.
Is this a Canadian company? They out of Ca- where are they from?
They're pretty much international.
Montreal?
They're, they're based out of Montreal. That's where their corporate headquarters is.
Why don't you come up and speak? I'd like to put you on the, you have to be by a microphone, Sarah.
Tall enough. So the company is based, it's an international company. It's been in business for over 30 years, and they're based out of Montreal, Canada. They have many national, international locations, so they also have operations all over the U.S., Boston, Atlanta, Colorado, California, pretty much anywhere you can think of. So, but they're, what they're setting up here is what they call a center of excellence, and it will be the fourth one they would be opening. And it's a business model where they are onshoring jobs that would typically, in the past 10 years, have been offshore to other countries. So really exciting, 150 jobs they've committed to creating here in the next three years. High-tech, high-pay, clean jobs.
Like that word.
Yes.
Just a quick question. What do you think, is it known what the starting number of employees would be when they, assuming that everything goes through?
Assuming everything goes through, they ramp up production, and I believe by the end of this year, they'll have 60. That's their goal. It kind of depends on their business and how many contracts they get that they'd be servicing out of this particular center. But 60 within the first year, I believe, is what they're shooting for.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? We have agreed to suspend the rules on ordinance 112. All those in favor of accepting this ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. This ordinance is passed. Ordinance 10112. An ordinance amending ordinance O4612, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement for administration of the city's CDVG revolving loan fund. Introduced by Councilmember Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we consider this ordinance under suspension.
Second.
The reason being that, once again, the timing on the negotiations for working towards having our revolving loan fund potentially managed within Athens County rather than regionally is needing to move forward with all due speed.
Okay. We did have a second, right? All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 10112 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The rules have been suspended. Member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 10112.
Second.
And this particular ordinance, as you can see from the text of it that's attached to the agenda, we did pass an ordinance earlier in the year to work with Buckeye Hills, Hocking Valley Regional Development District, and the mayor has been in negotiations now with the Athens County Economic Development Council, so that's something that we're working on.
Do you want me to add anything?
Yeah.
Essentially, this is our revolving loan fund, our CDVG revolving loan fund. It's been, before Athens Enterprise Development was operating that, they ceased to do that earlier in the year. I asked for authority to actually enter into contract with Buckeye Hills. Buckeye Hills is based, they cover several counties, about eight counties, I believe, so. They're based in Marriott. I wanted to have something more local. The Economic Development Council took over the county CDVG revolving loan fund. They were a little bit hesitant taking on both of them at the same time, so they staggered them a little bit. Ours is not as complicated as a revolving loan fund, because it has less money in the war chest, even less now that we've sent it some to the Southside Park. But we have no outstanding loans right now, so the idea is to get this up and rolling as fast as possible. Hence, the suspension is actually so we can get all the pieces together, signed and sealed by the end of the year. I'd like to work on that. This would include, of course, the, using the Economic Development Council, using the tools, again, this is one of the tools to bring in business, our enhanced business or accelerate it. We can work with conjunction of the county. If it's in the city, we could work with both revolving loan funds, and I hope is that we can do that, and, as I say, have a nice flow with it. So, do you have any questions? Go ahead.
Three sentences tell us, remind us what CDVG stands for?
Community Development Block Grant.
How many gets back into that revolving loan fund?
Okay. It's Community Development Block Grant, where we loan to for gap financing for small businesses. The guidelines are pretty straightforward. It's coming out, of course, the feds. The idea is you lend money out, it gets paid back with interest, we put it back in the pot and lend it out again. Unlike where we've taken some $80,000 and put it towards the Southside Park, that's a one-shot deal. Similarly, we have in the past had capital improvements. Well, it's a little early. Basically, you look and say the Arts West facility was bought with revolving loan funds. Again, really, the concept from the state level is if you're not using it, you're going to have to spend it elsewhere. I fully expect the next time we put out a form of CDVG funding, request, or grant application, the next pot of money will come from this revolving loan fund, which means we won't have it in our tool chest, and hence the immediacy to do this. Because I think it's a better use of it as revolving loan fund, because we will be able to. It's sustainable. That's one way to look at it. Can we use it over and over again if we do it right?
We have suspended the rules on ordinance 10112. All those wishing to approve this ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is passed unanimously. Ordinance 10212. An ordinance amending ordinance zero, I'm sorry, an ordinance amending ordinance O7912 to authorize additional funds for construction and construction engineering of the Safe Routes to School Project 262 and declaring an emergency. Councilmember Gosne.
Thank you. We've had a lot of urgent ordinances tonight. This is another one. I would like to move that we consider this under suspension of council rules.
Second.
Thank you. And the reason for the suspension is we'd like to, this is a project we weren't sure we were going to be able to do, but it looks like we will, thanks to some help from the state, so we'd like to get this construction started as soon as possible.
All those members in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 10212 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The rules have been suspended. Member Gosne.
Thank you. I would like to move adoption of ordinance 10212.
Second.
Thanks. And this ordinance is for the Safe Routes to Schools program, which the city has participated in and have been successful in receiving grant funds for a few years in a row now to help improve pedestrian and bicycle traffic in the city, or, I guess, make it easier to get to school by walking or biking. This is a project that came in over, the bids came in higher than expected, and so we weren't sure if we were going to be able to move forward with it. But we did get some additional funding from the state to help us pay for this project. And the total increase is $33,961 over the original estimate and the original amount that was set for this project. And this is, sorry, this is for new sidewalks where they don't exist now on Miller Avenue and Shannon Avenue in the city.
The rules have been suspended. All those in favor of ordinance 10212 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This ordinance is approved. Ordinance 10312. An ordinance authorizing surveying and preliminary- Ordinance one oh three twelve, and ordinance authorizing surveying and preliminary, preliminary design of the Columbus Road Lancaster Street Infrastructure Improvements Project number two sixty-nine. Councilmember Gosney. Nothing to say? Okay, nothing more, just the title, okay. Ordinance one oh four twelve, and ordinance authorizing the acquisition of property at eighty-three Columbus Road, and declaring an emergency. Introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you, Mr. President. I suspect that this needs to be under suspension. Did we talk about that last week, or can it wait for another week?
It can.
Okay. So, we're not being suspended? How exciting. This ordinance will authorize, we talked about this for quite a while last week. This is property at eighty-three Columbus Road, the Bylow old gas station that's on there, that's kind of a, an eyesore now, which is acquiring the, the piece of property that is now at the court, the court would like to get rid of it. It's been closed on, it had a couple times at share of sale, and nobody bought it. And there are several concerns about getting, acquiring the property, one of which is that we would have, be required to remove the gas storage tanks on the property and clean up any sort of spills or anything. There has been investigation of potential spills at the site by a consultant that did boring. There is concern that this is a potential dirty site in our wellhead protection zone, and so the city wants to go ahead with acquiring the piece of property. And it's, it's been noted that there has been people from the auditor's office that do have concerns about this. And I guess, weighing the pros and cons, because it is in the wellhead protection zone, we are concerned about that, we don't want it, it would go to the state, would sit around for many, many, many years, without any sort of, of repercussions, just sit there and not have anything done with it, so.
I'd like to add one thing to that comment, that if it, if we did have a hit on our monitoring, which our, our wellhead protection zone is monitored constantly, if there was a hit, the EPA would have to be called right away, and the state would have to step in. The idea that it would sit on their list forever and ever is not necessarily true. If there was an issue, they would have to step in, and the financial responsibility for cleaning it up would be theirs.
And just to pick up on what Councilmember Fall was just talking about, in terms of the potential liability, I mean, I want to make sure that everyone, both council and the public, understands that accepting this gift of, of property is not without its potential legal and regulatory challenges, because, basically, once the city would accept ownership of this property, they would be, under the revised code, what would be considered to be a defined owner. And so this is one of those situations where the liability for any leakage or for any problems that would occur here follows the land. So, in the eyes of the state, in the eyes of the EPA, the city would be just as liable as the previous owner who would have potentially been at fault for any, any leakage or any environmental problems that stem from that. So, that's not to say that it, you know, obviously, the administration in this case has, has made a determination that that's a risk worth taking because of the potential upside, and, and council may decide to do that as well, but just certainly understand going in that, you know, the fleas come with the dog.
And did I understand that from last week's discussion, were we waiting on some additional clarification?
I'm not sure if we can find that information, we're still working on that, in terms of what, you know, were there soil samplings done at the time when they upgraded their tanks, and, but I'll continue, that's why I don't feel a need to rush this until I feel like everybody's questions are answered to the best sort of candy.
Thank you.
Member Pack.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of clarify, Member Niceley's question, and then, because I was one of the ones who brought up the issue of more documents, and the, the point being is that, that these tanks have been replaced in the nineties, I believe, late eighties or early nineties, and along with that, there has to be soil sampling that's done underneath those tanks in order to have them removed and to put new ones in, so it's a, to, if, that, that information can be obtained somehow. I think it would be beneficial to helping council make that decision and-
I concur on that, I think we really, that would be very helpful.
I'll just make public that I do, I have some financial concerns, and that probably comes from me being with, you know, the, the finance committee, and what, you know, that might pose in terms of broader liability for cleaning that up. I understand how important our, our water source is, but at this point, you know, that, as Auditor Heck stated, you know, the state would, the state would step in if we don't own it. So, I'll just be public about those concerns.
We will be discussing this at least one more time. Ordinance one oh five twelve, and ordinance authorizing the cleaning and repair of water wells, and declaring an emergency. Introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe, if correct, I need to request suspension of the rules on this particular ordinance due to the emergency factor.
Do we have a second for suspending the rules? Okay, I'm sorry. All those members in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance one oh five twelve, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The rules have been suspended. Member Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move to adopt ordinance one zero five twelve.
Second.
This particular ordinance is annual cleaning, we do it on a regular basis, and the city's service director can add some more comments on this, but it's a fifty-five thousand dollar project that is done annually. Is that correct?
It has been on a fairly regular basis, it just essentially fell off our radar, and it's housekeeping, but it does need to be done, and we normally do this in the fall, and we'd like to proceed.
So, it's kind of like getting your teeth, your teeth cleaned?
Yeah, there you go.
Clean about two wells every year, so they roll it out.
It's a pretty big brush.
Which two wells are being cleaned? Which two wells?
Two, I think, yes.
Yeah. There's about eighteen or nineteen wells, and they, they don't all operate at the same, we run about sixteen, and so they shut down two of them and use the other two, and have been doing this for years, rotating around.
Actually, most of the time Nancy Bane caught this much earlier on in the year.
Right.
That's the way it goes.
Okay, the rules, I'm sorry. The rules have been suspended on ordinance one oh five twelve. All those in favor of, of accepting this ordinance, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. All those opposed, same sign. This ordinance is approved. And now we have resolution, a resolution for second reading. Resolution ten twelve. A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Introduced by Councilmember Niceley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we consider this under suspension of the rules.
Second.
The reason being that we are needing to have this to the auditor's office by October first, so we have an immediate deadline on this.
We have a request to suspend the rules on resolution R ten twelve. All those in favor of suspending the rules, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Member Niceley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for adoption of resolution ten twelve.
Second.
And this particular resolution has us accept the amounts and the rates as determined by the Budget Commission for our taxes. And the note is issued, a letter is issued from the Athens County Auditor to the Athens City Auditor, and this, we accept this particular rate so that we can accept the taxes that are due for the properties within the Athens City limit, the amount of that being about eight hundred thousand dollars, eight hundred and four thousand dollars a year, so it's very important revenue for us.
Auditor Heck, do you have to add?
No, I think she did it, they done it, that's, but we have to, we have to pass this every year to, for them to give us our money, so we want it, yeah.
We, we have a second for asking passage of this, acceptance of this ordinance, so council members, all those in favor of accepting this resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those in favor, same sign. The resolution has been accepted. We have one, one reading resolution. Resolution eleven twelve. A resolution supporting the Keep America Beautiful organization in southeast Ohio and recognizing the Athens Clean and Beautiful affiliate. Introduced by all council members. Who would like to speak to this?
I will speak to it.
Please do.
So, this doesn't cost any money. This is time and attention to our environment and our community, and it's great to have the Boy Scouts here and other young people in the audience, and even our economic development people, because we know a clean city means a lot when people are driving in and seeing broken glass and different things in our streets is not a healthy-looking environment. So, we, many of us in the city have worked on trying to keep Athens clean and beautiful for quite some time, and we just feel like becoming an affiliate of Keep America Beautiful is another way to keep that mission moving forward, and it also affords us opportunities to be connected more with grant opportunities. This is kind of a corporate model, and a lot of companies provide monies to cities to improve their, their resources and their ability to keep their cities clean. So, the Keep America Beautiful, I met the director last week when he was here for the Zero Waste Conference, and is there already. They like Athens because we have the beautification day that the university does, and we've had committees running and working, and we were able to provide a lot of data to them, and they appreciated that. They thought that was great. So, we're, we're doing well. I, I read this last week, I don't think I really need to read it again.
It's a longish resolution.
Yeah.
Excuse me? Yes. Did, Member Butler?
I, I just wanted to add that I'd like to take up, you know, just to thank, remember Pappy, when she was also a resident for her work, helping keep Athens beautiful, and, and her efforts along the way, along with a number of other citizens, so thank you for your work prior to being a public servant.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Member Pappy, would you?
I move that.
Go ahead, just move to accept this resolution.
I move to accept whatever. And she seconded.
And she seconded, okay. All those in favor of accepting resolution R eleven twelve, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, the resolution is accepted. One reason we've had so many ordinances and actions taken with suspending the rules is we've just come off a break, we don't, council doesn't meet in the month of August, and so a lot of things have come forward that we needed to deal with in a short time. So, this doesn't, we don't suspend the rules this often, except hopefully maybe once a year. Okay. Announcements in other businesses, in other business, could I have a motion to accept the auditor's financial reports for August two thousand and twelve?
Motion. I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor of accepting these, these reports signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The auditor's reports are accepted. We have gone on for a long time, but we, I, we have some residents here who I think would like to speak to us. Whether we have worn them down or not, I don't know. Do you have any speakers who want to come up to the podium? All right, here's one.
I have the sense that there's, over the months, that there's been a lot of concern in the city of Athens and on council about fracking and about injection wells. And I've seen efforts to regulate that, and I've seen some frustration with the outcome of the efforts to regulate that, because certain efforts are foreclosed by, or at least appear to be foreclosed by state statutes. So, I bring, I come here with a point of information. There's a case, Preferred Fluids Management versus the City of Mansfield, which is pending in the federal district court in Cleveland. There's a Texas company which is seeking to cite, well, in fact, has gotten approval from the Department of Natural Resources, to cite two injection wells, very much in the, in the city of Mansfield. And I understand that the reason for their wanting to cite in the city of Mansfield is because of railroad access. Now, the case is just beginning. Complaint was filed a couple months ago, and the answer was filed last week. I, a couple hours ago, I emailed to all members of council, to the law director, the city, chief city prosecutor, and to the mayor, copies of the complaint and of the answer. Now, this fight in, in Mansfield is very real because of the circumstances that I've suggested, you know, right in the city, next to a railroad. Mansfield's fight is Athens' fight. And I don't, I mean this not just in some sort of solidarity to atmospheric sense, because the, the outcome of that case will have either binding authority or perhaps at least persuasive authority on any case that Athens might be involved in. I've, I've talked with the, the law director of Mansfield, and if you look at the answers, I mean, he's, that it's been prepared and filed on behalf of the city of Mansfield, it's obvious to me at least that he's, that there's a lot of thought that's gone into the answer. There's a multi-layered defense that's been asserted, and he has the Mansfield's insurer on board. In my conversation with him, he, because there's not, it's not a complaint for damages, so there's no money at stake, it's a complaint for declaratory judgment, but he has gotten the insurer on board on the theory that, I'll try to knock this off, on the theory that, you know, if the city doesn't do everything it can, the city could be liable to residents. Anyway, the insurer's involved, it's, it's a serious fight. But Mansfield needs money for an expert witness. They've been cited twenty thousand dollars, the expert witness is needed to deal with issues like, well, the issue basically, as I understand it, is the potential migration of fluids that have been injected out. They need money for this, they, as I understand it, they only got four thousand, they need twenty. Athens could help them. Athens should help them, because this is important for Athens, because of the possible precedent, precedental effect of that decision. So, at this point, let me just say, I encourage council to look into it, I encourage you to ponder it. You've got any questions that I could help with, I'd be happy to try to do so. If you're interested enough that you want to talk to the law director of Mansfield, I could perhaps help you make that connection, although I may have failed.
Correct number.
I'm sorry about that. Was the second one any good?
I did, I unfortunately didn't get a chance to talk about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Any other citizens wishing to speak to council? Member Niceley, I think, could you have?
I just had one brief announcement to let people know that the Finance and Personnel Committee will be meeting briefly this week with the Human Resources Director, and there will be several of us council members, so I wanted to make that public, that it would be Thursday at two o'clock.
Any other announcements from anybody? Mayor, anybody? We are adjourned. Eight-thirty.
Okay.